M.J. Walker, Rhonda's only daughter, I guess, the youngest daughter, but also the youngest, only daughter. She's gonna lead us in a word of prayer.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this wonderful day. Thank you that we're gonna celebrate this wonderful Christmas time that you were born. Please let people that lost loved ones, or that need a home, or that need anything, please let them be in your arms. And please let you want to, please help them and make their Christmas very special. Pray over the commission that they don't get hurt, or their travels go well over the Christmas break. And that they have a very merry Christmas in all these people in the room. Amen?
Amen.
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 That was great.
All right.
That was wonderful.
Florence is not in with us today, so Kendall, as always, is stepping up. So Kendall, it's all yours.
Good morning to the commission. Good morning to attendees. Our scheduled attendees today, this, of course, this agenda was done before I knew I was taking this. So I will speak about agenda, future agenda item number two. Then we will hear from our county engineer, George Speak, followed by senior IT manager Rodney Smith. And our grants administrator Regina Walker will discuss two things. Moving on to the formal session, business items of the day. Consider resolutions for procurement of broadband study and engineering services for sanitary sewer evaluation and planning of the Montgomery Thrive Initiative. Terry is here this morning. If you all have any questions about that resolution or about either of those programs. Uh, Ms. Chairman?
Hold on a second. We don't have internet up here. You take the internet?
What do you mean? It's working.
He came up.
See, I'm gonna get a new one. That one ever ten years old. Ms. Chairman, you can go ahead. I, uh...
Yeah.
Ms. Chairman, I had, I had a question.
Yes, sir.
About the, uh, the two, the two resolutions that were, would be entertaining or voted on today.
Yes, sir.
Particularly the water and sewer study. Can I comment on that, Ms. Jim?
Sure.
We, I have the privilege of going out. I was invited by one of the residents out at Hunter Station on last evening.
Yes, sir.
I was there with Commissioner Ziegler and some of the state representatives. And we were talking about water and sewer. And the people out in that community feel like we have just forgotten about them. And they, quite frankly, what they told me, they were tired of studies. That we had so many studies and that they thought we had enough information already to proceed with stormwater mitigation in terms of spending ARPA money, as well as putting in sewer that would allow them to hook up to Montgomery Ward and sanitary sewer system. And so I tend to agree with them. I mean, we, we have spent quite a bit of time and, and money as well. A particular state of Montgomery, I've spent some of my discretionary money to get preliminary studies done in Madison Park. And that study is as recent as 2021. And we certainly know, we have a pretty good projection of what the cost is going to be. And so I'm just wondering, and of course, Ms. Rhonda was there last night as well. But I'm just wondering, what are we going to be doing as a result of this study? And it seems like we've already studied everything. We know exactly where the needs are. And I just think it's very, very important that we, we address those needs. And the people were just so despondent. They were just feeling like nobody really cared. And I just, it bothered me to see our citizens in a state of just despair when we're living in a city and a county that boasts about a million dollars in economic development over this last calendar year. This current calendar year. So that, that just concerns me. And Ms. Jim, I think you and I have had the conversation about the money before. And it just seems to me that we're really not addressing the issues of the underserved communities. And I know this money really was, part of the money was supposed to be for that. And, and the, the people, the low-income communities factored heavily into the equation that treasury used to decide how much money we would get. And so I would like to, for the chair to just entertain a motion if, if I, if I have that privilege, please.
Yeah. Terry, you wanna?
But before that, I, I'd like to make a motion that we take the remaining portion of the money that the county received and disperse it equally amongst the five of us. And I think I could do a better job in my district addressing the issues that impact my district.
Okay. Terry, you wanna address maybe the first two about the study and the sewer? You know, while Terry's coming up, you know, I agree sometimes, feel like we, analysis by paralysis sometimes. But I, I did notice in meetings with the, uh, the state that by our doing the broadband study, which I was against, the broadband study, spending money to study more. Cause I thought, you know, we've done enough studying on who has, who don't have broadband. But by doing that study, it's opened up a lot more grant opportunities from the state because we have invested in our own study to match up with theirs. So I'm starting to lean, I'm starting to get a little better on studies, but Terry, I'll let you address some of those concerns.
And you're absolutely right, Mr. Chairman. First of all, good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me today. To answer your question, Commissioner Sankey, this is less of a study and more of an assessment that will result in an action plan. I'm certain that you've read the top bid from page one to the end. And so one of the things that this assessment will conclude with is a written analysis of each of these four targeted communities. A very clear assessment of what the best solution is in each of those communities based on a number of factors like topography and the infrastructure that's already out there, proximity to water, sources, things of that nature. All that impacts what is the best way to eliminate these waste disposal issues that we have. I think what you previously had was a cost estimate of how much it would cost to lay sanitary sewer. That's, that's all I've seen for those communities. So this is much broader. So it will result in an action plan that includes timelines, things of that nature. Specifically for Macedonia and Hunter Station. We know that some of those residents have the infrastructure in place, but they just haven't tapped in. And what we don't know, what this study will tell us, is who, who has the infrastructure at their house where they could potentially tap in if we create a program to do that. So that's one thing that has to be done that we can learn from this study. And if you see the first part of, of the proposal meets that. But the end result is an action plan. What's next? How much is it gonna cost? How long is it gonna take? And why is this the best solution? To Mr. Chairman's point, it further will open the door for grant opportunities because you will have all of the information that you need to go to EPA, to go to EDA, or go to USDA, any of these federal agencies that have funding opportunities for sewer septic issues. You'll have the details that you need to be able to make the case for federal fund and support.
And I, you know, ADM, and I hear what you're saying, I guess the more data, the, the better your chances of, of addressing things in an intelligent manner. But ADM already know what the problems are, and I don't know if any studies are going to move them in one direction or the other. It's just a matter of them having the willingness to appropriate the necessary funding that has come down.
This will help.
Through EPA. And it, it may, it may help. But, but even the, the people who apparently have been chosen to do the study question whether or not some of the methodology is going to be affected. They talk about door-to-door, assessing whether the residents want to be on septic tanks or whether they want to be hooked, hooked up to sanitary sewer that's already in the streets. They don't, they're saying in the, in their proposal that they don't know if door-to-door is gonna be feasible, if it's gonna get the results they need. They don't know if mailed out are gonna do that. And they even talking about putting cameras down in the system to see who's connected, who's not connected. And that just seems to be a really an unnecessary approach and expense. So I'm just concerned about that. And even for the qualification, I'm sorry, for their qualifications to get this job or this contract, they even quote the studies that have already been done to justify their experience. So they're using the studies that have already been done to say they have experience in doing it. Twenty twenty-one, citywide septic tank elimination plan by the city was paid for. Twenty nineteen, updated estimation for sanitary sewer and stormwater drainage improvement in West Montgomery. Twenty twenty-one, Madison Park and Todd Road, sanitary sewer preliminary plans and costs, I paid for some of that. Twenty ten, sanitary sewer and stormwater drainage at multiple locations in West Montgomery. So one more study, I'm just not convinced it's gonna get it done. It seems to be more of a delay tactic than, than anything.
Two things. First thing, the way that this RFQ was written, we included every possible thing that could potentially be needed to round out the amount of information that you guys would need to make a decision and also to be competitive for federal grants. So everything that's in there, they responded to. What will happen next in the procurement process will be in negotiation of, of a contract that may or may not include all of those components. All right? So we wanted to get all of the information, all of their capabilities, all their qualifications and price estimates. So if that's something that this body feels like, hey, we don't need that in this contract, it does not have to be in the contract. So that, that is the next phase of procuring an engineering firm to do this work. So we would love to talk with you guys. That's excellent feedback. And if that's not something that, you know, is desired to be included in that contract, we could do that. The second thing, again, and I said this last night, you have those studies that have been done. It takes three votes here to get that done. It takes five at the city council to get it done. So if there's a desire to move forward and you don't need this, that is fine. But our sense from our meetings with this body and with the city council is that there's a more holistic review of these communities are needed so that a decision is made based on all of the information. If that is changed, then, you know, that's fine. But this is what we took from the numerous meetings that we've had as a body, that we needed a holistic assessment. And that's what this will provide you guys.
And they will come with cost, I'm sorry, Ms. Chairman, they will come with cost estimates. And then I can see us sitting around saying where we're gonna get the money from. So we're gonna be back where we started. So Ms. Chairman, I would like to entertain the motion of dividing the remaining portion of ARPA money amongst the five of us so that I might go out and try to get something done.
Well, we're gonna meet on twenty-eighth. I think this is, the twenty-eighth would probably be the time we can have these discussions. We have a pretty big agenda today for other things, and I'm not disagreeing, arguing with you. Terry, how much money has already been allocated in resolutions? I know we did mental health and other things. How much, of the eighty-five million, how much has already been?
Uh, about sixty-three, sixty-four million.
It's already been allocated. So that means, leaves us twenty-two million between the city and county. So if we split that, if you just run the numbers, that's about eleven million left for the county commission. You get two million. You've got up to, you know, the sewer, you can't, you can do something with two million dollars, but you can't satisfy everything you have. And I'm not in favor of splitting the money, even though I probably should be the biggest one in favor. Because right now, there's zero dollars going to my district. So some people may say I'm not representing my district right, but I'm trying to do what's best for Montgomery County. So I'm not in favor. I'm, I'm, I'm more in favor of trying to do what's best for the entire county and not just my district. But that's a discussion, Terry, we're gonna have on the twenty-eighth, and we have plenty of time to do it. So we'll go through every one of those commissioners, vice chairman Sankey, we'll address every one of those on the twenty-eighth.
One last concern, I'm, broadband is certainly, it needs to be studied. Cheryl, what's the balance for ARPA money for Montgomery County? Yes, ma'am. For Montgomery County, our portion.
And the body cameras.
So we got most of it, about forty million.
We ain't spent. We've allocated, but we haven't spent.
Procurement, so like the small business development program, procurement closed for that yesterday with the city. The critical home repair program, the procurement closes today. Both of those programs are allocated up to five million dollars. And so the evaluation processes will begin on those this week. Sheriff's body cam equipment that, that has already been procured. Then the broadband study and the sewer septic study. So, you know, there, there are things that in procurement, that takes care of all of the phase one initiatives. One of the things that's remaining in phase one that we're working on is the blight removal. So that would be the next item from phase one. That would get us through phase one. Then we move on to phase two. Some of phase two broadband study and some of the recreational upgrades. Some of that has been done already as well.
And again.
And then Care Star as well. I'm sorry, Care Star is also.
And again, most of the, the blighted property and the home repair would be in your district. So you're asking Commissioner Harris, who's probably not getting any of that, and Commissioner Walker's not getting any of that. I'm not getting any of that. But you're asking to split the money and all that's going to your district.
Well, well, I don't have.
It would definitely damage the people.
We don't have anything at this point, so I'm speaking of the way things are now. And you all are talking about something in the future that may or may not happen. Yeah.
We ain't go, Terry, thank you. We'll talk about this on the twenty-eighth. But Kendall, we need to.
While we're along, along those same lines, I have a question for Ms. Kendall, if it's okay, Ms. Chairman. In terms of the, the respondents to the, the studies for broadband and the studies for ward and sewer, can we have access to the ones who responded? Cause I think we've already chosen broadband. Someone has been chosen for that particular.
We have, we have determined who was the high person, the high firm in terms of scoring. Terry, have we reached out to that firm and let them know today? Have been selected?
The, the invitation, the notice of award letter has been done. And our understanding is we were waiting for today, and then that would go out.
Okay. And so do we, can we, I'd like to have a list of those people who responded to the broadband study proposal as well as those who responded to ward and sewer proposal.
Yes, sir.
And that we look at all the federal guidelines as relates to that process, diversity, when we were scoring them? For the rest of just one thing?
As it relates to diversity, when it comes to scoring them, we did not have, as it relates to the broadband, because I was looking at the broadband when there was no special point system for diversity. We did ask them to include examples of jobs that they did and, you know, what their staff does in term, you know, that, what their staff does look like. So we were able to see that information. But there was no special indicator or special point for diversity. We want to make sure that the people who are getting these jobs, who are going to do these programs, who are going to help people, are really ready to come in and help people. But I do understand exactly what you're saying.
I'm implying that we need to just do affirmative action for the sake of affirmative action. Now, I don't, don't say that I, 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 I sense a little there that we may be, that you imply that we might be looking for folks who are not qualified just to satisfy, to satisfy that diversity. But no, I, I certainly want to clear that up right away. So who, who set the evaluation criteria? Who made that up, the point system?
The point system, I'm trying to remember. Rodney?
Yeah, it has varying points throughout the RIT. Um, I'm not sure which company gave that to us, but based off of the answer supplied and the information that everyone rated, based off that point system on these different categories throughout, I think there's like seven.
Yes, sir. I was just curious as to who, who system is that? Who designed that?
So the evaluation criteria was, we made a recommendation, we drafted all of those RFPs, Levitate did. And we reviewed RFPs across the country and looked at evaluation criteria that was utilized across the country. And we really focused on communities that have effectively, you know, leveraged broadband. The same thing with sanitary sewer. So that recommendation was given to, in this instance, the county. And the same process was followed with the city. So we would draft an RFP, RFQ invitation to bid with, with our recommendations. And then presumably it would go through processes here and at the city, and the final version would go for.
Thank you for the time, Mr. Jim.
Thank you. All right, Kendall?
All right. Item number four, consider proposed twenty twenty-three renewal of external audit services agreement with River Tree Systems Tax and Audit. Item number five, consider U.S. Department of Justice equitable sharing agreement and certification. Item number six, consider twenty twenty-three county cleanup days. Item number seven, consider lighting services agreement with Alabama Power to upgrade the leased lighting fixtures at Zero Hyundai Boulevard. Item number eight, consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies, excuse me. Are there any additions?
Uh, yeah, for me, thirty-one hundred dollars for Old Cloverdale Neighborhood Association beautification project.
Are there any additions? Any other additions? Okay. Item number nine, consider miscellaneous appropriations to education. Are there any additions? And finally, not finally, excuse me. Item number ten, consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue. Any additions? Commissioner Walker has already given me one.
Kendall, we, I believe, Cheryl, Pike Road High School had returned twenty thousand dollars. What had happened was, when they won the state football championship in twenty twenty-one, the commission has traditionally helped those teams with some expenses for rings. They, the commission did give twenty thousand dollars from the joint. And what happened was, when the company that made the rings, the first batch of rings didn't come out right. There was a glitch somewhere. So the company, since they were delayed getting the rings to the kids, the company donated the second rings, which were correct, to the kids, which freed up that money that we had given. And Pike Road School wanted to give the money back since they did not use the money. So that's why our joint infrastructure balance was thirty-one, thirty-seven. Now it's twenty-three, one, three, seven, I believe is the right number now. So we do have twenty-three thousand back in the joint. If we want to, one thing we have done in the past was the Blue Gray Tennis. Commissioner Walker had put in there she would allocate five thousand from her own, but we have been doing that the last couple of years from the joint. I would recommend that we continue to do that from the joint and for ten thousand from the designated revenue.
Ms. Chairman, there was, uh, there was also a request ahead of that for, from Dr. Stewart for the.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I think she's coming today, Commissioner Harris, at ten. But Dr. Stewart had asked, what have we done in the past on that one?
She's asking for fifteen this, this year.
Fifteen thousand?
Yeah.
But that didn't really jump, cause I think we had done like, I think Teresa sent the note out, fifteen hundred, a thousand.
Commissioner Sankey gave two thousand dollars in November. In last year, December of twenty twenty-one, there was three thousand dollars from the joint. Twenty twenty, three thousand dollars from the joint. Twenty nineteen, Commissioner Sankey gave thirty-five hundred. There's also a six thousand dollar expenditure, I'm not sure what this is, B.C. number fourteen. And then also in twenty nineteen, Commissioner Sankey gave fifteen hundred dollars. And Commissioners Walker and Singleton gave two thousand dollars. So that is four thousand, that's four expenditures in twenty fifteen that add up to about.
For what now? What are you talking about?
Friends of the Theater.
This event that you brought up.
I'm looking at it right here.
Dr. Stewart's.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at, uh, in, in two thousand and nineteen, it was, what, what?
But it changed.
No, no, but it was, it was, it was more than, it was more than ten thousand dollars. I'll put it like that.
Yeah. It's what, what I'm looking at.
Thirteen.
Well, that's what I'm looking at.
Same one?
In two thousand and nineteen, she received thirty-five hundred plus six thousand plus fifteen hundred plus two thousand.
Thirteen thousand dollars total.
Right. So it's not a big increase in what, what we've done. I'm willing to put in, Sankey's put in two, I'll put in three, make it five, and all we need is ten from the joint.
Was it, was, was this event live at one time and then they went virtual? Is that kind of why it changed a little bit? Cause I know we did less in twenty, in twenty twenty-one than what we did before.
Are they back to live this year? That was a question we had last meeting.
No, they, there's gonna be televised for twenty twenty.
Televised.
Three, and hopefully live in twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Is that right, Commissioner?
Yeah, but what I'm proposing, I, I, I'll go three from my designated, and I'd like to see ten from the joint. You know, we're, 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 and it's not, it's not, it's not as big an increase as it is over the one we're doing with Blue Gray. And Blue Gray's been getting eight thousand. They want ten.
I'll give three for my designated also, Kendall.
Okay.
So that'll bring the total down to, um, now the less.
So where are we now? We have.
I gave three. Commissioner Harris, you just gave.
Three from designated from here on.
From both, and that's six gone, that's it.
His, and Commissioner Sankey's two thousand makes it eight.
That's eight.
Okay.
And then we'll do seven, I guess, from the joint, if you're okay with that, Commissioner Walker?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'd also like to bring up, last summer, I have in my notes that we agreed collectively to do five thousand dollars for Girls on the Run from the commission, but we, we never acted on it. So I don't know if it was a conversation that we had, but we, we, we generally agreed on that. I would like to bring that back up, five thousand dollars from the, the joint designated to Girls on the Run.
I think we, like I recall, giving some to, didn't we do a thousand dollars a piece on that last time?
We don't, we don't have, that's why I was confused too. We don't have any record of any money going to Girls on the Run.
I thought we did.
Is Teresa, is Teresa here?
I know we don't.
Will, will you double, can we, can we say that we'll do it if we can't find any record of them having received that money? Because we did talk about it, and I thought we agreed on it, but, but we're, I'm, I'm missing that they got it. So can we double check on that, please? Thank you.
Commissioner Walker, we.
I believe we supported.
Every year, it seems like we support them, so.
Not every year.
It seems that way.
I do, I support them every year, but not every year does the commission as a whole. One year, the commission was very generous and, and, and gave a big amount. And then, you know, the next year, I don't think the commission as a whole did anything. I support them every year. But, but let's, if you wouldn't mind, before the formal meeting, if we could verify. But, but let's, if you wouldn't mind, before the formal meeting, if we could verify if they received anything in the last fiscal year.
That'd be fine. And if they didn't, we, again, we got twenty-three in, in, uh, joint revenue that really ends at the end of this year, so if ten goes to Blue Gray, tennis, seven goes to Friends of Theater, five goes here, we're pretty close to being level.
Uh, one, one additional thing, Mr. Chen. Ms. Metley, you asked for some assistance with, uh, Dr. Marla the King Jr.'s birthday party. Did you ever get your paperwork?
Budget here.
There's a, a white sheet.
I'm sorry, you have what now? Okay.
It's right here.
Teresa?
Yeah, she sent an email too, yeah. 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 Ms. Metley, your, your total budget's thirty-four seventy-five, um, and I know you've got some other, how much short are you now to get to that thirty-four seventy-five? Yes, ma'am.
We can't cover that whole thing, but we can't pay for her entire.
I got it.
We got, we got Ms. Valerie.
Yeah, but we're going, uh, Ms. Metley, let us do this, uh, we're going to, uh, we'll discuss this, since we just got this today, and discuss it, and it'll be on the agenda for the next January fourth meeting, that's okay? Okay, I would thank you. Yeah, Kendall, we need to move forward, because we're running short on time.
Yes, sir. Agenda item number eleven, consider budget change request number five for engineering. Number twelve, consider hiring an IT Systems Manager at pay grade A-12, step seven for I, IS. Thirteen, consider hiring a Director of Elections at pay grade A-11, step seven, probate judge. Fourteen, consider position fee request for the Appraisal Department for an Administrative Support Specialist. Fifteen, consider position fee request for the Detention Facility for a Stores Clerk, Correction, two Correction Officer Sergeants, two Corrections Officer Lieutenants, and two Corrections Officer Corporals. Sixteen, consider a position fee request for a Receptionist, excuse me, for the District Attorney's Office for a Receptionist Secretary. Consider a position fee request for the Revenue Commission's Officer for a Customer Service Clerk. Consider position fee request for the Sheriff's Office for a Deputy Sheriff Lieutenant. Consider position fee request for the Youth Detention Facility for two Juvenile Detention Officers. Consider position fee request for the Youth Facility Court for a Juvenile Probation Officer, and consider travel and training requests for engineering, grants, probate, and the sheriff. Those are our, those are all of the items on the formal agenda. For our information, information session. Number, item number two, consider a bid award to Bond Construction. We have received bid, we have received the, uh, bids for the bid award for re-roofing of Annex Three. It was one of the, um, excuse me, one of several projects included in the renovation and repairs authorized by the commission earlier this year. The low bid was Bond Construction with a low bid of one point four-nine-two, uh, five-hundred thousand dollars. We are requesting to move along with this bid. We have, um, the architect, P H and J, is here this morning, um, and I know in comparison with the other bids, what we've, um, you know, did some due diligence with this, Bond Construction is a roofing company, um, and what we've come to find out is that the other two bids are general contractors, so more than likely what would happen is the G C would go and hire Bond to do the roofing. Bond doesn't need all of that, so they just, they primarily do roofing. We've called around, Bond does a good job with some of the other projects that, um, they have been doing, and so we're, uh, very, we're confident in Bond and their ability to get this job done.
So any questions? If not, it would be next agenda.
Are they, they're a local company? I've never heard of them.
No.
Where, where are they from?
They're out of, uh, Golden Corps.
Sir?
Golden Corps have them.
So Tuscaloosa.
Have you had that before, where we, have we had roofing jobs just exclusively roofing, roofing, and we had people just, who especially was roofing, bid on that, like that?
Um, in my short time here, no, sir, but, you know, we, we had not heard of them. When we, you know, we had this meeting last week, we had not heard of them. That's why we made sure, we made calls to find out, are they doing good work, you know? Are they who they say they are? Can they do it? And so all of the answers that we received back were, they're doing a good job on the projects that we've had them do.
And that no local roofers are able to do that?
The only local company was Stallings and Sons, and they were, uh, double the price. And then the next closest bid was a million dollars difference. Uh, Bond Construction, Lamar Allen has vetted them out and, and found that they are very quality companies, so, uh, that would be next agenda then.
What's the normal warranty on that, Pat?
Sir?
What's the normal warranty on those roofs like that?
Thirty years.
Thirty years?
Yes, sir. Uh, the, the, as a whole, though, we're finding that, uh, the last few years have been rough on the, on roofers, and there's been a lot of consolidation. So you've got these basically super companies that travel all over the state, and they've got, you know, offices in the different areas, um, in the three regions of Alabama and Southern. They're kind of a divided company, kind of, uh, industry right now, uh.
What, what's Melissa? Is, is insurance happening out on this any? Do we have any damage to that roof?
This building.
I, I, I have not been notified of any damage.
I don't know how old the roof is, but I'm sure it's got, had some hail damage and some storm damage on it, probably too late now.
There are, there are portions of this roof that have never been re-roofed since the building was acquired by the commission.
Really? So we're self-insured for that, right? Anyway.
If, if it's deterioration and, and wear and tear, that's not, that's not any problem. It has to be an actual accident event, that's the one.
All right, all right.
Currently, you are not working on this roof.
Okay. All right, thanks.
The next agenda, Kendall.
All right. Item number three, presentation of County Rebuild Alabama Annual Report. Mr. George, speak.
Good morning, um, this, uh, featured agenda item, uh, it is, it's, uh, uh, 2022 County Rebuild Alabama Annual Report, and it says all the roads listed that we resurfaced this year using Rebuild Alabama Fund, and, uh, we have to present this at the first meeting in January to satisfy the statute.
That's fine, the next agenda.
All right, item number four, consider multi-function copiers to Xerox. Mr. Rodney Smith with I S.
Good morning. Um, yeah, this is a request, RFP, that went out, a person put out, replaced the, the contract for the current multi-function devices that we have throughout all the departments here at the county, and based off the tabulation and the technology involved, Xerox was the lowest bidder. And in addition to that, one other key factor, we ended that decision, is the fact that we're looking to replace our old fax lines, which are copper. In the telecommunications industry, copper is aging infrastructure that all the carriers are looking to kind of like provide less support for, that'll have the equipment or the people. So I feel like, at this point, we're looking to move to that E-Fax solution, that'd be something based over IP, um, which is basically over the network, instead of having a hard, physical telephone line for faxes, we'd be able to do it electronically over the internet. And they provided a much sounder, cheaper solution for that, in addition to the actual devices.
And this, this figure, you and I talked about this, Rodney.
Yeah.
Uh, and I appreciate your time. Is this the ninety-four thousand, thirty-six dollars, forty-four cents? Is that an annual cost for?
Yes, for each apartment. But.
What's magic about twelve, Rodney? Everybody gets twelve?
Those are the months, I guess.
Yeah, that's the month.
Oh, oh.
I was just surprised we had that many copiers, uh, that had to be maintained. It seems like, I don't know, with technology, like we ought to have some other modality to, that we could use, so I guess if.
In all state bids are twelve months.
Yes, yes. And it is, they, they are all state contract, but the pricing we got was a little bit better than what Seaman offered on state contract, back during our own RFP. There's a lot of departments, they have a lot of areas, and, I mean, the sheriffs at the jail, there's a lot of paperwork that has to be handled. We try to eliminate as much as that as possible, but, you know, the, the nature of the beast is cost of doing business, uh, probate is another prime example. They have a lot of paper documents that they try to digitize, but they also have to give, um, customers receipts and things, and a lot of them want paper. So I know a lot of the department heads, we depend upon them to let us know what they need, what their needs are, and I think several years going back, the cost of trying to maintain individual high-speed printers with the cost of toner and everything, uh, the price that you see there really is, is very cheap overall.
Thanks, sir.
Next agenda.
Thank you, Rodney. Items five and six will be presented by, uh, Ms. Regina Walker. Item number five is consider contract agreement for ADEM grant awarded to Parks and Recreation to improve playground safety at Snowden Park. And item number six is consider 2022 SCAP grant applications. Regina?
Good morning. Both of these are, I'll be in and out, so I'll do this, um, ADEM one first. This is a grant award that we received in collaboration with our partners at Carp Deck. There's no match, and if you want to know a little bit more about how Mr. Williams and his staff plan on utilizing it at Snowden Park, he'll be happy to tell you.
Any questions, uh, James? Any questions for James?
This is just basically a, a rubber fiber that'll be placed down in the playground versus the engineered wood fiber.
Any questions? Next agenda.
Item number six.
Our second one is our SCAP grant, uh, this is the 2022 SCAP grant. It just helps to offset cost of medical, a small portion of the cost and, uh, medical bills in the detention facility.
How much?
And there is no match.
How much did it run?
They have not, um, given us an amount yet. Once we put our application in, they're awarded per state on a percentage formula, so we won't know that probably for about a month or so, but it's usually somewhere about maybe ten, twelve thousand dollars.
That's, you're right, that's a little small there.
Every little bit helps.
Yeah, you're right there, too. All right.
That's it for me.
Next agenda.
Thank you.
Item number seven, consider resolution to expand permissible uses of previously obligated ARPA funds.
Which one is that?
That's for the Crisis Diversion Center, Carestar.
Yes.
Two-point-five.
Ms. Chen.
Does it need provision to do that?
So the initial resolution for Carestar was for the construction of the Crisis Diversion Center. All right, when we were going through the risk assessment and review process with them, there was an issue that we flagged, and we've been working with them over the last few months to get it rectified. Um, I'm happy to, to share a little more detail with you guys offline, but because it's a potentially, um, has legal implications for them, nothing major, but it was enough for us to flag it, uh, because there's certain compliance regulations and that, um, relates to construction of buildings that we have to meet in the final rule.
So the money was limited to construction? I thought it was construction and then as needed for other?
For programs, so, so it was five million, the estimated construction cost was a little over four million, about four-point-five, and so the remaining cost, um, we said could be used for programs. Where we are now is they have, they are almost finished with construction of the building, because to get that state allocation that supports them, that seven million annually, they had to move forward with construction. Could not wait to pass our compliance checklist. So where they are now is that building is very close to being completed, but they spent that money, they had to use their operating funds to move forward. So it changes kind of the structure of, of their need. Now the need is more to supplement the operating funds that they had to use to build the building, not to build the building. From a compliance standpoint, this is actually cleaner, um, but we wanted to come back and clarify that resolution, because it, in our minds, is substantially different. We're not looking at the construction of the building and the excess to support program. I mean, we're now looking at supporting their operating fund with some of it to complete the construction of the building. Does that make sense?
Not really. It just seemed to me, that's why I ask you, do we need to do anything, because?
I think so. I think just for clarity, for, for compliance, we want to make sure that the resolution aligns with the expenditure.
Well, this is the kind of thing that I think we should, Sankey's talking about, you know, making up work. You know, I, I mean, we, we, we said you could use part of it for construction and part of it to operate. We didn't, it doesn't matter which part they use for which, it seemed to me. And, and that, that's already covered, but here we are, and this is.
Nor, normally.
Work to be working.
If, so if you were working, and I know your county attorney's not here today, but if you were working with your county general funds, that would, that would be okay, but because this is federal money, and because they're very strict compliance measures, we want that resolution to accurately reflect exactly how that money is being expended. So it's a small change, um, we could move forward quickly, the contract is already done. Susan has made the changes to reflect this, but we just want to make sure that the resolution that is passed accurately reflects exactly how the money is being expended for compliance and auditing purposes as it relates to our.
I just hope you, I hope y'all didn't spend a whole lot of time on it.
I'm sorry.
I hope you didn't spend a whole lot of time on it.
Uh, no, I mean, this is a, it's a simple change. They've spent a lot of time on the compliance, they provided us with documentation that we're happy to share with you to review, uh, between now and the next, uh, meeting, and if you have any questions, Susan and I are happy to sit down and discuss that in detail. They've also shared their willingness to, to sit down and discuss, so this is really more of a technical amendment.
Was there ever some, any concern, uh, Ms. Reynolds, about whether or not this capital project met the federal guidelines?
No, it wasn't so much whether it met the federal guidelines, but there, there are certain procurement processes that had to be met, and we, in that process of reviewing and talking with them, there was a flag, um, that needed to be addressed. And that's just part of the risk assessments, which you know is part of what's required under the final rule.
Okay. Thank you, Jerry. Next agenda.
Consider, item number eight, consider amendment to number three, to contract with Diversified Companies LLC to extend contract until May one, 2023.
Hey, again. Um, this, this is a contract that's going to extend what our current service that we have for probate west, uh, for the revenue and probate offices out there, um.
Rodney, put your mic up a little higher, people can hear you on TV.
That better?
Yeah.
What, what this is going to allow is a continuation of the current contracts in pli, place. We have another item that is a bid award to another telecommunications carrier, um, so we want to award that to the other carrier, which I think is Alabama Telephone LLC. They won the, well, we would like to award them the, the bid for that, uh, they had the lowest cost for the same level of service. The only difference with them, they have to build the fiber out to get it to that building, and it's going to take them six months, so the continuation of this contract, of the current contract will allow, will allow that to happen, um, and then at that time, then the other, Alabama Telephone can take over. Uh, and then at that time, then the other, Alabama Telephone can take over.
Any other questions? This kind of combines eight and nine together, right?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. All right, so eight and nine will be next agenda.
Thank you.
Item number ten, consider bid award to Centos Corporation, number two, to provide uniform rental.
Be next agenda.
Item number eleven, consider bid, consider bid award to Martin Environmental Services for collection and disuse of refuse services.
That will be a change from Amways, who currently has a contract. Uh, Martin Environment came in lower, uh, about fifteen percent lower than, uh, Amways did. I vetted out Martin Environment Services, and, uh, they have done a good job in other locations.
Where, where have they located, Ms. Chairman?
Dotson. And even with the five percent consideration for local, they still were ten percent lower in price. So it'll be for one year to give them opportunity. Any other questions on that one? And Amways has done a good job on the, the weekend stuff too, so, as they have done with the garbage collection. All right, next agenda.
Number twelve, consider bid award to telecommunications firm LLC, uh, DBA Citranet for private data network for probate slash revenue west. With items eight and nine.
Yeah.
No, I'm saying, this was combined with what you spoke about when you talked about items number eight and nine. All right?
So that'd be next, that'd be next agenda.
All right. Um, number thirteen, general information item, discuss board member appointment to the Montgomery City County Personnel Board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I was, uh, had, I contacted a person I did hear back, and, uh, he's agreed to accept that appointment. Uh, his name is Shalankas Brown, he's a partner with Ball Ball and, uh, with the Ball Ball firm here in Montgomery. I'll have to get his, uh, get the resume from, but he's agreed to accept that appointment, Shalankas Brown.
Sounds like he's, if he's with Ball Ball, and his attorney's very qualified, I'm sure, so. Um, I'd like to see his resume, but, uh, we'll, um, based on getting the resume, we'll put that on the next agenda to be voted on.
All right.
All right, lastly, we do have a wave rule item. Uh, item number one, consider engagement of consultant for minority and women-owned business initiative.
Yeah, Commissioner Harris has kind of led this charge for us on this one. Uh, I did, uh, meet with the mayor, and the mayor would like to do the sixty-forty split. Uh, Chairman Harris has facilitated that agreement with, uh, the, uh, Jeter Company, to do that for the city and county, similar to what we've done in the past on sixty-forty. Uh, we'd like to start this in January, the, uh, first of January. The city council's gonna approve it, uh, either tonight or, uh, at least have it in place for January the first. So, uh, if there are no objections to wave rules, I'd like to see this one placed on, uh, the wave rule item.
I, I did get a call from the mayor. He, he, he'd like to see it start, uh, first of January, sixty-forty, uh, split, uh, under our supervision.
Yep. Any objections to wave rules on this?
No objections here.
Okay, all right. Is that all, Kendall?
Those are all of our items for the information session.
Well, we've got five minutes, we'll take a five-minute break, and we'll start promptly at, uh, ten o'clock.